I wouldn't recognize you.
Yeah. Well, it would have been second or third grade. I know I don't have to be everywhere. Oh, but you probably know this little friend. Yes, um, and...
Are you in that you?
Not tonight, no. Yeah, yes. And so here my personal issue. You're... Each day for some reason. Yeah. Oh, yeah. So I only have seen those bits, yeah. And then we might deliver the gym lessons. Thursday art and Wednesday. So wow. So, um, so for that. Doug. That's beside all of this. Oh, I thought you wanted to share. I thought you wanted to share. I even had something like a pretty coffee. Excellent. The coffee gets so bad.
Good evening, everybody. It's seven thirty and I'd like to move even to water. Um, first we'll start with the hydrate to the back. Hydrate to the back. I think I just say there. And to recover what is standing is one nation under God, indivisible, with unity and justice. Now I'll do a vote call. Ms. Meskyn.
Here.
Ms. Bush.
Here.
Ms. Boyd.
Here.
Ms. Matinanti.
Here.
Ms. Bueser.
I'm here remotely for health reasons. Thank you.
And myself, Paul O'Leary. Paul is present, but can I? So I will go on to the school norm, the school norms. School committee norms, and that is, what do we do? What do our students need to know and be able to do? How will we know when they have learned it? What will we do when they happen? What will we do when they have?
No.
Next on the agenda is reports from votes taken in executive session. That's zero. I'd like to take and see how the minutes of the executive session.
I make a motion to seal the minutes of executive session.
Second. That was Kate. Uh, Michelle made the motion. Kate, second that. We have an agenda here. Does everybody agree? Or have any further discussion? Okay. If everybody's in favor, say aye.
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 If we were going to move something on the agenda, would we do that?
Since it's a gender review at the moment, you can ask to move something up, make a motion to move something up on the agenda at this point.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to move, um, let our L under school committee business up to A.
I'll second that motion.
Is there any discussion? Black. Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion passes. So... Discussion, action, um, job performance of administrator. We will be moving that until Monday, um, for a a decision on the IED. So that's going to be Monday for a special meeting and for further, um... Okay. Okay, so then now we're going to move down to the consent agenda. And... So...
At this time, is there anything anyone wants to pull off of the Kingston agenda?
So I'm going to make a motion to, um, or to table personnel actions, contract raises, and enrollment registration and staffing, if we could table those through our next meeting.
I'll second that motion, Kate.
All favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Motion passes. C, D, and I have a motion to be tabled into the next agenda. They pass.
Can I, can I make a motion to approve, um, the consent of J, uh, the consent agenda minus C, D, and I?
I'll second that motion.
All favor? All favor?
Aye.
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 Passes. Next on the agenda is community comments.
Order. Um, can I, should I record Emily as I'm taking notes as just a non-vote on this particular agenda offering?
Yes, on this particular item.
Next on the agenda is community comments. Um, the purpose of community comments is to provide an opportunity for members of the public to make a statement regarding agenda items or matters of general policy for which the committee has responsibility or duty. Comments are not directed at agenda items and matters of general, general comment policy to distract from the central mission that all of us share, to, to provide community supporting goals, policies, and resources to make certain that South Kingsville Public School delivers a high-quality education for all students. This committee is committed to this mission and wants to remind the community that in order to achieve it, community comments should be focused on agenda items and/or issues related to education of our children. Comments that stray from this goal are disvalued. If you, if you are dialed into your phone and would like to be recognized to speak, please dial nine to raise your hand, and I will call individuals in order. Once recognized to speak, dial six or to unmute your phone, and when done speaking, dial six to mute yourself.
Thank you.
Anybody that would like to speak that's in, um, the meeting right now, or if you want to walk up to the podium and state your first and last name for the record, please.
Is it okay now? This is on?
No.
Now, do I have three minutes? I don't think I'm going to need it, but I brought my timer just in case. My name is Martha Stamm. Hamlet Island resident for eighty-four years, on eighty-four years, Pope. I'm not here to bash anyone tonight. I just want to support Nicole Solis and her quest for information along with support for the great teachers and the taxpayer. Last Saturday, I was fortunate to hear many issues discussed by a Providence teacher, among other speakers, from Westerly and Cherahoe. What I heard was disturbing. Teachers, great teachers, in all areas, were trying to make learning better for all students, not just the chosen elite students. I saw books that were not appro, not appropriate for young children. I heard about intimidation. Our tax dollars in South Kingstown of twenty-five thousand per student is astronomical here. And when they are not learning the subjects for a lifetime of contribution to society, certainly it is troublesome for taxpayers like myself. As an addendum, I would like to just make a note of the fifty-seven years ago, the, um, the landmark Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four was passed into law. Now, I am not smart on everything, but I think it should be looked into as far as financial subsidies regarding that, uh, law that was passed. It was Title Five, I mean Title Six, which went, which was enacted as part of the landmark Civil Rights Act of sixty-four. I just don't want us to lose any funding if that is what is, um, mentioned in that. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bridget Gomzov, um, special education teacher at West Kingston. I know most of you. Um, I'm here tonight to support Linda Savistano, as I've been for the last three meetings that we've held. I'm concerned that teachers are weighing in, giving their opinion, and I'm not sure that it's being heard. Um, there's a lot of us that are taxpayers and a lot of us that are community members, um, and we're, should be considered valued members of the community. Um, I understand that there are people, um, members in the community who believe that Linda should be removed from her position as a superintendent, and I wholeheartedly disagree with that. Um, in my email I sent to you last night, I expressed my concerns about teachers' voices being heard. We weren't heard with our previous superintendent, who didn't value our opinions or respect us as educators, and that didn't really matter. And now we have Linda who respects us. She values our input and encourages us to work in a collaborative, professional, professional learning community. And we have the vote of confidence for her. So now I'm wondering, does that matter? If we weren't, if we aren't listened to now, then when will we be heard? Linda supports kids, Linda supports families, Linda supports teachers, so that's why I'm here to support her. I hope that you consider all the members of the community when you make your decision, whether that's, I fought tonight, but it will be next week, um, which I, I really am disappointed in knowing that school ends on Friday. Um, and was hoping that after a very, very long year, um, that we wouldn't continue to keep coming to these meetings and feel like we don't have, um, to know what direction we're going in. So, um, it's been a very difficult year for everybody. It's been a very difficult year for educators, and it's really hard, um, and really demoralizing to be coming here every two weeks and feel like we're not getting any answers. So I'm hoping we can finally come to some kind of answer on Monday night. Thanks.
Dave Grote, South Kingston, former school committee member. I'm sure what you just said is true about how she supports the teachers. Unfortunately, she violated student data privacy. That's number one, student data privacy. She not only admitted to giving it, she not only gave it to a, she didn't give it to a public official, she didn't give it to a school official, she gave it to a regular South Kingstown resident. It's like she just gave all the student information to me. That is, that is horrible. I mean, once you violate student data pri, privacy, our children are number one, our students are number one, number one, number one, number one. You can't violate student data privacy. It can't be done. She has to be removed. There's not even a choice. I was at the town, uh, council meeting, the last town council meeting. Oh my God. What I heard, and I asked if it was all validated, what I heard, and the town council has it, uh, she has to be removed without, without a doubt. You cannot violate student data privacy ever, now, in the future, for any reason whatsoever. Even in the corporate world. Whether a document is private or not, you can't share it outside of a corporation unless it's approved. A non-secured document, you just, just can't do it. But our students in a public domain, that student information is now in the public domain, was shared with a regular resident by and this candidate was Emily Komitsky's treasurer.
Excuse me. This situation has absolutely nothing to do with my former treasurer from four years ago. So please do not associate me with this situation. It's completely inappropriate. So you can end that now.
Was she your, your treasurer?
Okay. I'm just going to ask us not to have a back and forth here, please. I, I, I understand, I understand. And so, sir, I would just ask you to please stick to...
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll continue. Now, next I'd like to support Nicole Solis. When she came with information request, when she came for an information request, we could have easily provided the information. It wasn't provided.
Then... Um, could we, um, like, just stick to the topic? I don't want to have people, you know, in here, we're not here to shame each other, okay?
I'm not shaming, I'm saying, I'm saying...
Make a comment and, and try to learn from people shaming, please.
We're, we're not shaming. What happened, what happened to Nicole was shameful. What happened on the last meeting. I'm here to support, support her and the information needs for our kindergarten children.
I think three minutes is enough.
So...
Christie, can we just have a time truck, please?
Yeah.
Uh, good evening. Chris Hubbard. I live in Wakefield, Rhode Island. Let me take my glasses off so I can actually read my notes. Okay. I'm the father of two, soon to be three kids, in this absolutely amazing school system. First, thank you to all of you and to the dedicated administration and teachers at this school system. At the last meeting, Michelle made a statement along the lines of staying focused on doing what is right for our school kids. She is absolutely correct. So tonight I'm here to ask you to do just that. Do what is right for our kids and maintain the stability in our schools. All of this noise, bro shortly, the attack on town on these right-wing nuts, two hundred information requests, facility fights, the town Facebook page, your town Facebook page, nonsense, resulting in a crazy town council investigation. All of it is just noise. Let it go. The fact is, inside the schools where it really matters, things are good. Linda Savistano, her administration, and the teachers have successfully navigated one of the toughest years ever.
Ever.
Ever. The kids learned, the kids were kept safe, and they thrived. We're not past this pandemic yet, and we have the right team in place to do whatever is necessary in the fall. We're not past this pandemic yet, and we have the right team in place to do whatever is necessary in the fall. We have stability. Were mistakes made? Maybe, yes, but they are in the past. Let's learn from them, implement procedures to prevent it from happening again, and move forward. Unless you're about to sit, don't cast stones. Let this stable care routine, the right team, continue to do the important work they are doing for our kids. Thank you.
My name is Jacey Northup, and I'm a resident of Wakefield, and I also have two children in the district. And I served on the school committee from 2018 to 2020. I can't believe we are here again, having to defend Linda Savistano and try to convince the seven of you not to make the biggest mistake any elected officials in S.K. have ever made. Two weeks ago, you came out of executive session and voted six to one to remove taking action against the superintendent from the agenda. A few days ago, a similar action item showed up on the agenda again. And since then, I've been wondering what new information that would cause those provided new insight into what occurred? New information that would cause those responsible for setting the agenda think action against the superintendent should be revisited? To be perfectly honest with you, as a parent in the district, which child's name was on one of the cards at the center of this controversy, I don't see what the big deal is. Has any harm or danger come to any of the affected S.K. children? I don't think so. What new information could possibly have come to light that would be so compelling to be worth putting a human being through another night like two weeks ago, and now you're gonna do it again on Monday? When did we stop caring about the actual people behind the wild allegations? If Linda's biggest crime- If Linda's biggest crime is not coming forward soon enough with the person's name she released the directory information to and for not connecting the dots soon enough, I ask you this, what do you suppose she was working on? The bond failed, so she was left with how to repair our high school in order to retain our accreditation in the next two years. She was preparing an outdoor and indoor person, an outdoor and in-person graduation safely during the tail end of a global pandemic. She was wrapping up the school year at all seven schools while getting things in line for the start of the 2122 school year. And she was responding to countless APRA requests, among so much else, I'm sure. Instead of focusing on where Linda dropped the ball, we should be thankful for all those she kept in the air. I don't have to stand here and tell you all the ways Linda Savistano has been an asset to our district. You already know, your inboxes are full of emails singing her praises. Sure, you're also hearing from the same group of folks who have complained about pretty much everything since the 2018 election, when they weren't elected or re-elected. The same group that came to almost every school committee meeting from November 2018 to yell at us and criticize every decision we made. I could go on and on about those folks and the damage they have caused, but I won't, because I attack problems, not people. I do believe the only new information received is from social media and the negative narrative that has played out there, demanding more action and a continuance of the investigation. To what end? What are they looking for? It appears to me to be a witch hunt led by those most disgruntled by the event of November 2018. I will close with a story. A building inspector in our town was caught back in April taking signs in support of approving the bond. He was confronted by the town manager, as well as a member of the-
Um, excuse me, excuse me, um, you're over in three minutes.
Well, I think you better hold your respect and just quickly finish my skating.
No, you're not gonna shame people in this meeting, please.
I'm not shaming anybody, I'm telling a story, a firsthand story, and you will listen.
It is not on the, this item is not on the agenda.
This item is relevant to what's happening right here.
I would respectfully ask that you're over the three minutes.
I would respectfully ask that I sat at that table and listened to a lot of people in this room for a lot longer than three minutes.
That's okay.
And I think you owe me a first minute.
But we're not talking about stuff that happened in 2018, 2019. We're talking about today, and you're not talking about today.
Yes, I am.
You're not talking about today.
Yes, let me finish and wrap it up, and you will see that I-
Okay, well, please, please continue.
Thank you. He was confronted by the town manager-
This isn't about a private citizen who is not a member of our school district, Jacey Northup.
This is about a town for me.
And we're not the town council.
But they're wrapping up this.
Excuse me, I, we're off the agenda here, and we're over three minutes, I'm gonna ask you to please sit down. Thank you.
Um, I got a message saying, uh, meeting ID for Zoom was wrong. It says inspired on Zoom video, says meeting number, but it not exist on the phone, so.
Paula, if I can just address that, I just used what was on the written agenda in Word docs and was able to log in. So I just, if anyone's having problems, if we can find out what's happening, but I know I was able to log in.
Yeah, and Ms. Brusso and Paula were both able to log in also. I think, we can say it verbally, if we can have it in front of them, maybe we can reiterate it?
I just copied the Zoom link out of the agenda and pasted it into my browser to get, and then gave the, um, meeting password that is listed under the Zoom link, and I was able to get it.
So if whoever is having a problem, Mr. Sweet, if you can just tell them to use the link that's on the agenda and it has the password under it, it's working, because there are six people logged into it. The phone? It's the same information that's on the agenda, it works, so just have them try again.
Sorry? Hi, I'm Michelle Manning, I've written you a couple of letters of support for Linda, and I wasn't going to speak, so I haven't prepared anything, but I guess I felt moved to come up here and let you know how I feel. I, honestly, that flyer, I have two children, I don't care, you know, I don't care. Your children's name and address, you know, it's not important to me. There are so many things that are much more important, and what I said in the letter to you yesterday was there, you know, that is the least, I feel like that's a red herring, that we're using this to get rid of someone who's actually starting to open up, to allow other voices to be heard in this district, and to hire people, to want to hire people, to represent, you know, to hire people. You know, I tried getting a job here in 1990, couldn't get an interview. Tried getting a job here when I had my first daughter. Didn't even get, you know, the first time, couldn't even get anything to sub, you know? And Linda is seeing the benefit, and there's so much research out there of the benefits of having teachers of color in your schools, and it was stopped, you know? And so I see that Linda is moving us forward. She is moving us forward in an agenda that's more inclusive and less Eurocentric, and where all voices can be heard in this. For someone who went to the Little Mutunik Schoolhouse and was a child of, one of maybe two children of color at that time, never hearing, never seeing stories about me, never hearing, never seeing teachers that looked like me, it's, I realize how important it is, and I realized that I was never being seen, that I, as a child, was never being represented, you know? And then trying to get a job here, after going to URI, I had an early childhood degree from URI, couldn't get a job in this district, couldn't get an interview, couldn't even sub. Taught in Providence for 29 years. And then came here, and under Linda, I actually got a job. I'm an E.L. specialist here, and it was sad to hear that you tabled that, because I was hoping to get my job, to get my job back, but, I was hoping to hear that at this meeting, but I guess that can wait till Monday. But really what I want to say is, my support is behind Linda. I walk my dog, I have a COVID puppy, a St. Bernard puppy, and I walk her, I'm always walking her, she's a big 100-pound dog. And I talk to people all the time, no one cares. No one cares about this flyer. This is just a red herring used to cover getting rid of her, because we are afraid to open up the curriculum and to have other voices be heard.
My name is Brenda Asher Dillon, and I've been working as a teacher in South Kingston for about 18 years. I was born in this town, I graduated from South Kingston High School, as my mother did before me. And I just have to say, this makes me really sad, to see this kind of needless division and animosity between the people of this town. There was so little of it seems to be based in anything really tangible and really important. And I just want to express my support for Linda. I know that under the previous administration, I was afraid to speak out. We would be tricked into coming to a meeting, speaking online, and then be called into the principal's office the next day because we said something that somebody didn't like. And Linda may not agree with my opinions, but I can talk to her and I can trust her. And she has turned the teacher morale in this town totally around. She has navigated one of the most difficult times in the last century with grace, with courage, with leadership. And, you know, I couldn't imagine having done this if she was not here. I was afraid to go back, I was 65, I was petrified that I was gonna get COVID, that I was gonna get my father-in-law, who's gonna be 100, sick. I didn't see any of my brothers because my exposure was so great. Every day was stressful, yet she made it somehow okay for me to be here. She set up, she set up, what is the envy of the country? We had our kids in person from day one, and it was okay. It wasn't easy. It wasn't easy. I am so ready for summer, it is not even funny. My blood pressure is, you know, all that stuff, but I did it. And without good leadership, I would not have done it. And I'm glad I did it. I'm glad I didn't retire. I met some wonderful children, got to know my conference here much better. And, you know, I would just say, did she make a mistake with that flyer? Yeah, and that's what it was. It was a mistake, it was a lapse of judgment. And God forbid, none of us ever have any flaws. You know, it was a mistake to do now, to make a politically based move now that terminated Linda would set education back in this town decades. Okay, our two minutes and 57 seconds.
My name is Jessica, and I live in Wakefield. I'm here to talk about an uncomfortable topic, the APRA request. I'm troubled by the lack of transparency and the lack of accountability in this district. I'm really just bothered by the fact that we're not leading by example, setting a good example. It's okay to disagree with each other. I think that's healthy, and I think that we need to encourage children to think critically. But it needs to be done in a civil manner, and I'm not seeing that online, I'm not seeing that in person. Asking questions needs to be normalized, and it bothers me that a parent had to submit all these APRA requests in order to feel heard, in order to get those questions answered. And so answer the APRA request, stop saying that it takes an enormous burden on the district to answer the APRA requests. The requests don't take away from the students. You're obligated to answer the questions, and the person requesting the APRA are paying for that. They are, they're paying a hefty amount for those APRA requests. And so I'm just asking you guys to think about the concerned parents and to try to make things more transparent. Put the curriculum online, if that's what they want. The lies and the lack of accountability, transparency, and civility following the mailer debacle just further solidifies my belief, really, that the APRA request might be the only way to uncover everything. And I understand that individuals are saying that it's not needed, that it's a conspiracy theory, but the fact remains, just put the curriculum online, answer the APRA requests, so that everyone can feel like they're being heard and everyone knows what's going on. Thank you.
Hi, sorry, I'm Katie Garvin, South Kingston resident, a parent of two elementary school kiddos and an upcoming preschooler. I just really want to thank all of you, I can't imagine what this job must be like. I think you are all under a tremendous amount of stress for a volunteer position, and we really can't thank you enough for your time. I just want to publicly say that from the perspective of someone with small children, especially one with a kindergartner, that being able to have our kids in school this year more than anyone else I know in the country whose kids were, you know, able to go back in person, we will never forget that, and our gratitude is so deep. So if there is any universe in which, you know, we can hold on to this amazing leader, I would just, I would love to see that happen both for our kids and also for our teachers who are working so hard and who have made it really clear that they're feeling stable and they're feeling supported. And I understand that curriculum comes up an awful lot in these meetings, again, a very difficult task. However, curriculum takes a very, very long time. It's very hard to develop curriculums when things keep changing, so just wanted to throw that out there. And my professional background is in education, so I remember what that's like, trying to work on those things. I also just wanted to say one quick thing, I know that there is gonna be, I think, unless it got moved, and I'm sorry if I mixed that up, an update on the mediation process regarding the APRA requests. I just wanted to advocate again for the importance of protecting our LGBTQIA+ students and how vital it is that we protect their sense of belonging in our schools at every single grade level, whether this is through the successful creation and/or support of alliance groups within our schools or through something as simple as referring to elementary students as friends rather than boys and girls. These are very small actions that could have a large and lasting impact. Research will continue to support that our LGBTQIA+ students are at a significantly higher risk for self-harm in their lives. However, this risk is significantly reduced if there is just one accepting adult in their lives. I truly believe that every single amazing educator that I have met in this school system all have the capacity to be that one accepting adult. And I really just hope that we can keep ourselves focused as a district on making sure that we're moving forward and really protecting these kids and showing all of our students what it means to be an ally and to really help all of our kids feel like they belong here. Thank you very much.
Good evening, I'm Esther Everly, I'm a longtime resident of South Kingston. I graduated from South Kingston High School, as did my husband and my three children. And I have also been a math teacher at the high school for 36 years, and more recently I've served as math partnership. I attended the last school committee meeting with over 120 colleagues in support of student superintendent Linda Savistano. I came willingly then, as I do tonight. I'm here tonight in support of Linda Savistano and also of all of you as school committee members. I have seen many administrators and superintendents come and go. It's not an easy job these days, but I have to put Linda Savistano right up there with the best that I've seen in my tenure. She exemplifies leadership qualities that we want and need in South Kingston. She has a vision of equity for all embedded in long-term strategic thinking and planning. She is a problem solver and an effective listener and communicator, not to mention the fact that she's incredibly organized and always professional. Linda is both passionate and a compassionate educator. Most importantly, Linda Savistano has the students' best interests at the heart of all that she does as an educator. In her own words, she states, "At the core of all I do and deep within my heart is a belief in all students." Thanks to Linda, our students were able to attend school in person and- Thanks to Linda, our students were able to attend school in person and/or virtually all year. She made it possible for students, families, and teachers and staff to make it happen in the best, safest possible way under the circumstances. We are touted as a model for other districts. I'm very upset right now. I hear that Linda is being blamed for the divisiveness in our community. I can assure you that the divisiveness started before Linda came on board. It's shameful. We have elections, we vote on bond issues, some get the outcome they want, others do not. Not getting their way or disagreeing with others' opinions is not a valid reason to attack others on social media or to threaten public servants and their families. As school committee members, I'm sure you have lots of people chirping in your ears right now. I implore you to do the right things. Do not resign. I understand this is not easy. Know that you have my support and the support of many, all of many, many others in this community. Listen to the vocal minority, but hear the support of majority and do the right thing. Keep superintendent Linda Sastano as our educational leader and hold true to your collective commitment to a collaborative culture which is, in your words, grounded in shared decision-making and a professional learning community, engaging in active, open communication within an environment where it is safe to express differences, share successes, and learn from its mistakes, and to develop partnerships with increased opportunities while fostering community pride. Thank you.
My name is Greg Sweet. I like this setup much better than the other way. I haven't heard anybody for the last year and a half or so say anything bad about Linda working for the teachers and the students. So I don't have kids in the school at this point in time, so it's got to be true to take everybody at their word. But she also has another job to do and that's to take care of the administration side of this, of this school district. If you guys had young kids and you got a babysitter and your babysitter was really, really good caring for the kids, but stole stuff from your house, would that be acceptable to have to do? I don't think so. If it's off topic, I'll stop.
Yes, sir. This is off topic. Please, please move forward.
Because Linda has two parts of her job, one to take care of the students and the teachers, she has a job to take care of the administration. She can't be trusted on the administration side. She may do the best for the students and the teachers, but she can't overlook what she did, taking information, waiting a while. I'm not buying that. Couldn't connect the dots. It just doesn't make any sense. What is worth?
Hi, everybody. Martha Bidigian here, working in the district librarian. I did send you all an email. I won't read the whole thing, but there's a couple of choice parts that I think might be helpful. If the mission of a school committee is to serve the teachers, the students, and parents of our town, it would be very important to recognize the excellent leadership that Sastano has exhibited and the faith in her that is shown by her staff. You don't always see this. We need stability right now more than ever. Other people have testified as to the difficulty of this year in schools. I will echo that. We could use some stability right now. I ask that you bear the stability of our district in mind as you make further deliberations on this matter and consider the strong support that SK teachers have for superintendent Sastano. We support her because of her excellent changes and additions that she's made in our district already and the collaborative style she uses to move us forward. You may not know, it occurs to me, how much work is already underway in our district as regards the curriculum. To remove Linda at this time would demoralize staff, bring current work and progress to a standstill, and throw us into a very unstable period lasting certainly more than a year, probably several. These things would all combine to have a negative effect on our students ultimately. This would be the exact opposite of your mission. Please work to resolve this situation kindly, swiftly, and to prevent damaging upheaval. Please work together to smooth over and stabilize our district so we can continue moving forward in a positive direction for the sake of the students, the teachers, and the families. We implore you. Thank you.
Nick LaFleur, I'm the dean of students at Peestale. I support Linda Sastano. I was just thinking that if I walked in here off the street and walked in, listening to all of this, most of this, you would think Linda had been here for decades. The way people are talking about her, you know, what's been in your emails, it seems like she's been here forever. She's been here two years. She's had this impact in two, really less than two years, much of it's been on Zoom. I think Jessica from Wakefield hit it on the head. It's about trust. You know, there are two sides here, but it's all about trust. And thinking restoratively, there's nobody who can reinstate that trust that we need than Linda. She develops these relationships, but we run into issues, she reaches out, and once she creates that relationship, things work. I think she's the epicenter of what we need right now. I understand the pressure to debate where we are, but I think that if the goal is trust, it might sound counterintuitive, intuitive, geez, counterintuitive, but I think we need her now more than ever. It's only been two years. What does this look like in a couple decades?
Hi, I'm Melissa Taylor. I'm a member of the educational support personnel. I did send you all an email and I really have nothing prepared for her right now, but I did want to show my support for Linda. She's been nothing but supportive of all of us, like all of us. You know, as an educational support personnel, we're often not treated the same. We're really not. And with her, since day one, she's treated us with the utmost respect. Anytime we have an issue or problem, she's there. She's there. I send her an email, she's there. We meet, we figure it out, we discuss it, we walk through it together. We may not always agree, but we get through it, we figure it out. You know, did she make a mistake? She might have. She might have. I think, Lynn, have you guys made mistakes? I'm sure you all have. We all have, for sure. But to like just outcast her like this, it's absurd. Like I don't even, like I don't even know what else to say. It's absurd. It's a mistake. It's for sure, it's a mistake. We've all made them. Imagine if we've never been given a second chance on something. Imagine that. I've been given plenty. And I'm sure most, if not all of you, everybody here, I'm sure we've all been given more than a second chance. And I think she deserves it. We deserve it. We deserve it. We need her. We need her. I don't know what else to say. We really don't. We're, you know, whoever just spoke before me, like she's in the middle of so much right now and to just put all that to a halt? I don't know. I don't know how long it would take to recover from that. I really don't. That's all I have. Thank you.
Hello, all. My name is Ryan Muir. I am a resident of South Kingston. I'm a teacher here and I have three kids in the district, I have two kids in the district and I have one that'll be in kindergarten next year. I'm here to support Linda. Just a quick anecdote, music departments don't typically get one-on-one meetings with superintendents for three hours at a time. We had a meeting with Linda at three o'clock on Friday and she sat with us, seven or eight of us, and talked to us for three hours and heard our issues and what we wanted for our program. And she has responded since she's been here to all of it. And she's been fantastic. And I think what Nick said, I don't think you ever hear anybody supporting a superintendent like this. It just doesn't, I've worked in a lot of districts. I've moved, I've been in three different states, I've worked at so many different districts, and this doesn't happen. This is not a thing that is normal. So there's got to be something to it and I hope that you keep that in mind going forward. You guys are great. Thank you.
I wasn't going to come back here tonight because I thought I had what I had to say the last time, but there is more to say. We might as well get rid of school committees. We might as well get rid of town councils. We might as well get rid of everything but social media. Social media is going to rule the day. I've read so many things about Linda Sastano that are negative that I know from doing a little research that the gatekeepers of those blogs and those websites are letting the negative people have their say and other people are getting blocked out. You people need to do your homework, okay? I respect every one of you up here. You have a tough job, okay? You're in a hot seat right now because a lot of people are looking at you as to carry the future of this town and this school department on your shoulders for years and years to come. I came before you after I retired, I came out of mothballs because everywhere I went in this town, I saw teachers with their heads hanging low. Former students of mine who I knew inside and out who were gung-ho teachers couldn't wait to retire. Some of them quit. Something was drastically wrong. And that's why I came before you like five or six years ago, because I care. I couldn't sit home and let people get torn down. Now I see a different story and you've heard it tonight. The teachers here, they have someone they can talk to, someone who listens. I don't know Ms. Sastano anymore than I've known the past administrator, but I do know one thing, the attitude and the morale of the teachers is completely different than it was a few years ago. And that should be of the utmost importance. You know as well as I do that a teacher that enjoys their job and wants to be there every day, okay, has the attention of those kids and they learn. A teacher who doesn't have that morale feels like they're being stepped on or not appreciated, they're not going to do as good a job. Now if somebody wants to come up here and yield me three minutes more, I will give you some examples of why Linda Sastano has not done anything different than quite a few people in the past, including myself. I would have been fired if you people were sitting in your chairs thinking about firing her for what she's done. If you fire her, you should have fired me.
Hello, my name is Mark Sumoma, resident of Wakefield. I just want you folks to know, thank you for what you're doing first and foremost. But secondly, I'd like you to think for just a moment what our town would be like during what we've all just gone through with COVID if we didn't have Linda leading us and guiding us. Take a moment to just think, if we had no guidance, how horrible this situation really could have been for our students. My son, speaking specifically, it was a challenge for him, but because the teachers were there and they worked with him and they kept him focused, he ended up having a successful year. And my wife and I are very proud of him for that. And we know that that would not have happened if it wasn't for the teachers and the leadership that was here in South Kingston. But on the other hand, if we didn't have that leadership, if our students weren't here in person being guided by their teachers, even if it was sometimes from a Zoom and sometimes in person, think about what the situation would have been like. It would have been horrible. And if you know anyone that lives outside of our town or outside of an area that had in-person learning, just speak to them. Ask them what they went through, what was it like for them? It was the guidance from our superintendent that made that possible. And had we not had that, you're talking about a whole year worth of education that would have been thrown in the trash because that's what many other districts feel like happened. And our students here are progressing and going on to the next level successfully. And if it wasn't for her leadership, that would not have happened because she guided the teachers, she guided everyone that was involved, and we moved forward. It wasn't easy, just like tonight's not easy for you folks, but we did it. If she's not here, it's going to be disastrous. And I really don't want to imagine what it might be like for the next couple of years. It could be just really bad. So I implore you, really consider it. Look in your heart and think of what it is that you're going to make a decision about, not just feeding off to a political agenda, but to the future of all the students that are involved, to the future of all the staff that is involved, and the progression of our town and how we are going to move forward and be viewed. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Allison Calm. I am the school psychologist at Peestale Elementary School and I'm here to support Linda Sastano. And I just want to say that regardless of your decision, the outcome, that Linda's vision and Linda's work will move forward through the countless educators that she's impacted over the last two years. I am ready to strap in because clearly there is still a lot of work to be done. Thank you.
Do we have some? Hold on a second. Hold on.
Hi, my name is Sean Cody and I live in Kingston. I was actually doing this at home, but figured it was time to kind of come in and speak about this a little bit. And a lot of it's to the teachers, so it might actually be not so much at the school committee, but directed to you guys as teachers. We have to understand what's happened here, that there's a separation between what a superintendent is doing in regards to the school and a data breach of potentially every student in a school district, in any corporation, in any business, in any other situation, if there was this type of data breach, the person would be immediately fired. It doesn't matter what your belief is of them, whether they're a nice person or a kind person, whether they're right or wrong. It was a, it was an unacceptable mistake that impacts children. It impacts the parents of children. And it doesn't make you feel like you're data secure. It doesn't make you feel like your children's data secure. So I'm not asking you to release her because she may or may not be doing a good job as a superintendent for the future of this town. I'm asking you to fire her because she allowed a data breach for the children in this town. And if that's not a fireable offense, what is to teachers? What is to the town? What is to the school committee? That is a fireable offense. There are other superintendents, there are other principals, there are other district leaders that have done just as much for the communities around us that she has, and they had not made that same mistake. There's probably principals in this room that could take on this role and do just as good of a job, but again, not release the data of the children. I think that's what leads to be separated here, is you had a violation, a breach of data that in any model, in any part of this town, in this state, that person would be fired. And I think all of you know that. I think that's why we're having this meeting. Every school committee member here probably realizes that if this was at their job, they'd be fired. That's all I'm asking. It's not because I disagree or agree with her capabilities as a superintendent, it's that I believe that she released information that should be more important to you than how she makes you feel as a person, because sometimes leaders make mistakes that cost them their jobs no matter what they do on the other side of the aisle. That's all I'm asking from you guys, is to think about releasing her for duties. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jennifer DeFeo. I'm a resident of Wakefield and a teacher at Broad Rock Middle School. You all received my email at three this morning, very upset about that this is even on the agenda again. And I wasn't going to come up like a mansplain, that really ticked me off because it's beyond. No one knows what our job is like. You can all sit there and pretend you know what it's like, but until you are teaching, you don't know. You don't know the living hell we went through with some previous administrations. And the fact that we are saying she's human. We need her, should speak volumes. We voted you in. All we're asking is for you to hear us. And the other thing I'm gonna address is the union did not make me come here as I'm hearing that they are torturing all of us for these reasons. Not that anyone needs to know, but I voted against the school plan. I did not think it was a great plan, even though the union did. I am my own person. I am my own thinker. I don't need the social media bullies. I just want a school committee that I voted for to support me and my colleagues who want to keep Linda Savastano. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Denise. I'm from Wakefield, and I would like to give my three minutes to Mr. Kavanaugh, if that's possible.
One of the gentlemen spoke tonight.
Oh, hold on, Mr. Kavanaugh. I really need to let...
Okay.
...have that intro sitting with their hand raised. Um, thank you. So I'd like to call, um, Flavien Chantel. Chantel? You can unmute yourself, please. So, um, then I'd like to call on Roberta Mahalan. You're able to speak now?
Thank you, Paula. Can you hear me?
We can. You're very strong, Paula.
Okay, thank you. I'll speak up. Uh, I'm Roberta Mahalan. I live in the Tuane, Rhode Island. I am a graduate of every school in South Kingston. Um, I'm calling obviously about the Savastano issue. I've heard everyone say, over many meetings, the priority is the children. Um, I did hear someone earlier saying, "The school committee is to serve the teachers, to serve the teachers, students, and parents." And I would say that the priority, the paramount, the highest duty that you have is to ensure the safety of every single child in the South Kingston. This is not an issue that's minor. This is the release of private student information into the public domain. It's not 1970. WWW, we don't use it anymore, World Wide Web. It doesn't take long for that data to go everywhere. It was a release of data into the public domain. It was compounded by the failure to admit that she had done it. For weeks, she had a statement prepared by school committee council and released to the public and released to RIDE, the Department of Education, that was not true. She knew she had done it. This is a fireable offense. This is a termination offense. This is not moral behavior. It's not a mistake. It is putting the safety of every child enrolled in the public school district in danger. In 1970, we felt safe. Little kids walked down the street. I lived on what's not Old North Road. I could walk down that street all by myself. That's not 2021. 2021 is a time of child trafficking. If that doesn't make you kind of sick to think all that information is out there, I'm not quite sure you're paying attention to the news. I don't envy you this decision. I'm thankful that you're taking the steps that you did to look into it. But the reality is, the release of data into the public domain, you're not getting it back. The safety of children was compromised.
Roberta, I just wanted to let you know you're at three minutes.
Well, I would like a little more time, please. I'd just like to say that we can't...
Could you just wrap it up real quick, please?
Thanks, Paula. We can't ask the question, well, no harm has come. It's a possibility. We shouldn't have to even think about that. It's the top, the paramount, the top of the pyramid. She was responsible. The contract says you can fire her.
Okay, Roberta, I'm sorry. I do have to stop you at this time.
But that's okay. Thank you, Paula. I appreciate you.
Next up is Paula Bradley. Um, Paula, you can go ahead and speak.
Thank you. Can you hear me, Paula?
Yeah, we can hear you. There's a little spark.
Okay, is this any better?
Yeah, that's better.
I'm hearing it. Hello, this is Paula Bradley. I'm a parent in the district. I have two children in South Kingston School. Um, so the superintendent has had force that we can't ignore her. Secondly, to choose the path of honesty after she intentionally chose to do one thing. She violated SC Calcy 8820 by sharing student therapy information for a political purpose. And even worse, she attempted to cover it up. The Savastano knew what was wrong to give that information out, which is why those very good trainees... Community member Rex Sweet asked for the same information for the same purpose, and he was rightfully denied. So why was the request from Stacy Bazian when you honor? Perhaps simply because she was in support of the bond and right to that? This shouldn't be about the number of Linda received or the people who bore or resist against the superintendent. This is about integrity and trust. It might simply, it comes down to rights versus wrong. Our superintendent did not uphold her commitment towards students and to parents. She abused her power. She lied repeatedly. And why? Her political gain. She has lost enough trust, has lost enough respect. Is she capable of effectively leading families before and after what she did? Will parents be able to trust her? Will taxpayers trust her to the next bond group or forgive her for wasting thousands of dollars on some investigation that could've been avoided with simple truth and honesty? She also very likely put our district at risk for legal action when we exposed her lies as she lied on multiple legal accounters' lines. If we don't hold her accountable, if we continue to meddle and accept this in danger, what precedent are we setting? What example are we setting for our children? That it's okay to lie and cheat and to continue lying at all costs until you are caught? And that once you're caught, play fingers? Is that the lesson that we're supposed to be teaching our children, right now? What do we value as a town? Do we value integrity, honesty, respect, truth, accountability? If you answered yes, the answer is clear. The superintendent is to resign for eternity. And the investigation really needs to continue so that parents can know exactly what happened in our children's deaths. Everyone who was involved in this needs to be held accountable.
Paula, you have reached the three-minute mark.
Okay, may I just say my last sentence? It's our choices that show who must be the law, law more than argument.
Thank you. Thank you all for your comments. Um, Mr. Kavanaugh, did you still wanna take your last?
I came here tonight because I read something that was sent to me that was on social media, calling Ms. Savastano a liar. Um, are we gonna let social media be judge and jury? Okay? I also read that it was breaking up friendships. Everybody knows that I was for the approval of the school bond. Many of my friends were not. We're still friends. We argue about it, but our friendships are there. If they're not, then we didn't really have a friendship. Okay? That's what everybody's supposed to be doing. That's what you're supposed to be doing. Supposed to be agreeing and disagreeing and still getting along. Okay, now my point, the reason I came. What Ms. Savastano did, I believe is not a lie. I believe it is an honest mistake because I did the same thing. And I know other people in this district, administrators and on the town side, that have done the same thing. I'll give you a quick example. I had no idea what an athletic recruiting service was way back. Someone came to me and said, "I'll give you a boosters club, $2,000." Okay, if I can come speak to them about recruiting and how I can get their kids into a college and get them an athletic scholarship. $800 for one sport, $1,500 for two, $2,000 for three sports, if they're in three sports. Okay? And I heard that part, I said, "No, thank you." Okay, if you wanna talk to them about recruiting, that's fine, but that's off limits. About the same time, I had a parent who wanted to go with a bunch of other parents to start a brand-new sport in the school system. But we didn't have it in the budget. And that person offered to raise the money for me, okay, to get the equipment, just so he could get started and have a club team. The end of the summer, he came to me and he said, "I've raised all the money." It was great, okay? We got the club team started, got a lot of kids involved. And then something strange started happening. I was getting mail at my house for a student who wasn't a member of my household. Didn't think much of it at first. Knew the student. Um, the address was spelled literally correctly, off by one letter. And a couple of months later, I got another one. It was from that recruiting service. The person was raising the money for a new sport. Met up with this guy. The person who started the new sport came to me and said, "Could you give me a list of the athletes? Here's the rosters with all the names on them, of all the kids in all the sports, like 500 of them. And I can contact these parents and get them involved and see if these kids wanna play this new sport." I did that. I gave them the names. I gave them everything. And lo and behold, that guy that tried to sell me a recruiting... or give us a recruiting donation, gave money to him.
Mr. Kavanaugh, you're at three minutes.
Gave money to him. And that in return was used to start that new sport. I had no idea when I gave the names to that person. That's only one example. It's been going on and on and on for a long time. When I saw that thing about the flyer, I went, "Uh-oh." Not because of exactly what it was, because I knew the piranhas would be out.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Brian Nelson, I'm a teacher in town, resident. Again, I just wanna thank you all for your dedication to our town. And I know this is a tough situation. You've heard it from teachers tonight, not just me, in the past, that, yeah, Linda truly is making a difference. Uh, when it comes to the mailer, what I've heard through the renowned association of superintendents is what Ms. Savastano did wasn't the first time. In fact, it's happened many, many times by other superintendents, right? Many, many times. So to throw her under the bus for that, I think is really unfair. Now, could she handle it better? Yes, she could've. But I'm asking you to please do something that's hard, forgive. That's hard to do. It's really hard to do. Because I wish you could see the changes that are happening in our buildings. I wish you could talk to the students, right? If we get students here right now, right? They're not thinking about the mailer. Right now, they're thinking about how this was a great year in school if Linda Savastano made that happen. So please, begging you, find a solution, all right? Send her to another training, something else, all right? We need Linda Savastano in South Kingston. Thank you.
Three minutes, and we really need to move on.
Thank you. My name is Stacy Zillo. I am a parent of a child going to high school as well. I don't have anything prepared, but I feel compelled to speak to the community. I'm a registered nurse. I'm a school nurse. So I know how hard it was to make school safe, the protocols put in place, the trainings, the PPE. You know, teachers teaching virtually, teaching in person. I know because I work at Head Start and I know the steps it takes to make a program safe for children. So I commend all of you. I commend the teachers and I commend Mrs. Savastano for making this a successful school year for our children, for keeping them safe and keeping them healthy. Health is paramount, and that is keeping a child safe, making a safe, comfortable learning environment for every single child. So I commend all of you. I commend all of you, and I commend Mrs. Savastano. And thank you for helping keep my child in school. He's an only child, and being home virtually last spring was very isolating for him and hard on his mental health. So being in school this year and having in-person learning, having socialization with his friends in the context of the pandemic was incredibly important. And we are one of the only school systems, not only in this state, but in this country, that had a successful school year, that kept our children safe and our staff safe during a worldwide pandemic. So that is something to be celebrated and commended. And you know, in light of what happened here with the mailer, we need to look at all the pressure that the staff and Mrs. Savastano has been under during this time and under these present circumstances and everything that had to be taken away, Sarah. So judging here, perhaps, it wasn't maliciously. It wasn't an intended to hurt anybody. And she has acted incredibly professionally, where people have been on social media bashing her, bashing you, bashing our incredible teachers. Instead of being constructive, let's learn how to be a community, to work together to make the next year, in years after that, successful reported teachers, for them to feel supported, for our kids to be supported, to have an inclusive learning environment. Let's move forward as a community. South Kingston is an incredible place to live, and I love living here. And I thank you all for your time. So please consider your comments and your next motion. Let's move forward. Let's do our best for our kids. Thank you.
Valerie? Go ahead, you can speak.
Yes, hello. Sorry, I had my hand raised a little late. Uh, I'm Valerie Sparrow-Lowey. First of all, thank you all for your service because I know you have a very difficult life right now. Please remember that the release of schoolchildren's names and addresses is a problem, particularly when your family staff have intentionally opted out of being included in the school directory or other filings, either safety, custody, or domestic violence situations. If you are a parent and you have your own kids' names and address and photos all over the internet, then please, please, take a few moments tonight and count your blessings. that you have never been in a situation where that is dangerous for your family. There are families in our community where that is not the case, and anyone who has ever worked in an educational setting knows that it is always a top priority to protect student privacy. You can't even volunteer in the classroom as a parent helper without going to S.K. Harris training about how important student privacy is. So it is obviously a fundamental problem. And it is some of the little concern you care some folks have to deal with. Because it definitely is for many people. So just on a separate note, somewhat, or probably, you know, I disagreed a few years ago that it was necessary, it was still a committee, to spend useless legal fees to investigate former superintendent who had already resigned. I also disagree that it should not have been necessary here to spend legal fees investigating this situation because it was pretty clearly a mistake. It should have been acknowledged as such immediately. And you know, for anybody who had been following this, you know, it was relatively clear, you know, to my support probably happened and why. And there was a statement, um, we say. But all of this, you know, money and effort and arguing is distracting us from things to be done. You know, we need, we need to spend all of this to cover important things like our buildings and our programs and working to enhance the education for our kids. And I hope that the school district and the administrators who, you know, speak a lot about transparency and trust and collaboration can come back together and focus on what is important for the future. Thank you.
Thank you all for your comments. We are going to move on to school community business. And the first thing on... Your agenda. Is to present the Teacher of the Year reward.
I just wanted to take a moment to let everyone know how very honored and humbled I am to receive this recognition. I am fully aware that I am one very small representative within a district filled with amazing and dedicated South Kingstown educators, both past and present. I want to also take this opportunity to thank Superintendent Sabastano, my principal Ken Polacar, and the entire administrative team sitting here for their amazing dedication and leadership while guiding us through this absolutely unprecedented past year that we've had. I also want to acknowledge my colleagues across the district, my Peacedale colleagues who are my family away from home, the Peacedale families themselves, and most importantly, my students who always provide me every single day with inspiration to be the best educator that I can be. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Julie. So we're gonna... Also, we want to recognize Colin Smith, Maurice S. Rock. Thank you, Colin.
Can I do a shout-out to my school? I just want to take the opportunity to thank my phenomenal staff, especially the teaching assistants who are outside every day or inside if it's incumbent on them in making sure that our kids have engaging, thoughtful, great ways to spend time together and to learn new ways of teamwork, collaboration, cooperation, and just the amazing staff within Wakefield and beyond who do anything and everything for our kids to be successful, engaged, safe, and loved.
Next on the agenda is updates on the open projects and manner of activity. Sam Badner? Radner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Sam Radner with the parent group. Just here to give a brief update on the agenda this evening. Just to line up with our discussion at last month's update regarding the request for qualifications for Architectural Engineer for the next, the next stage in the process for the divine order supporting both the CIP, the Hackham Human Plan, as well as, you know, the next step in re-engaging in a more comprehensive look at the state and state support for the community. And we updated the school committee back in June. The RFP was released back on the 7th of this month. We've gone through a question and response period. We did extend the response date from due tomorrow until this Friday to ensure that we get responses out to those potential, those potential firms. And we will begin next week through a reinternal review process of those responses along interviews and then recommendation back to the body targeted at the second conclusion of the law. And at that point, if they're in the outcome of the process, then we'll be able to start again with those first steps. You know, the architecture firm, and the engineers supporting the two aspects. With the school committee and the relevant team members, we'll talk about that in the process. Again, relatively consistent and very willing with the school. Well, I don't know here, just, you know, all the adjustments to that response date. I'm happy to answer any questions from the chair or from the board.
Sam, I just have one clarifying question. When you said we extended the response date to be due by Friday, June 25th, was it a response to people applying in? Or are we responding to them saying that we accept a... You lost me there for a quick second.
Yep, a good question, Kate. It was just to make sure that we got the responses to... There was a three or four questions that were posed by some of the potential respondents. So we wanted to ensure that we provided enough time for our response to those questions to the due date of the response. So we knew from tomorrow to Friday, just to ensure that we had the time between those responses and those dates. So it wasn't to allow people to come in. It was more just to make sure that the questions asked and answered there was accurate time after that for the potential respondents to, you know, make any final adjustments to the excellent ones that will come in eventually.
Thank you.
Any further questions from anybody? No? Thank you, Sam. Next is the APRA update.
Sure, and I have an update. We did receive a request to the school committee, a received response to the school committee's request to mediate the APRA issue. The request to mediate was not, was denied. The attorney wrote back to us saying that they were unable to mediate this issue. So we continue as a district and in conjunction of legal to respond to the many APRA requests, and we will, you know, continue along on that path.
Go on.
If you don't mind, I have just a simple question. Do we have an idea of how many APRA requests are left to respond to?
So I think we have answered 120, but a lot of those answers are with bills. So I think it will depend on if we've only received payment for one so far. So I think that will depend on if we receive payment for additional requests. And then I know there are a number, I think about 37, yet to answer as of last night. But I did answer some more last night, and I know Jenna answered some more today. So, you know, they continue to come in and we continue to try to keep up with answering them.
Thank you. Any further questions? Going to go down to extension of filing and approval of minutes from April 27th to 22nd, April 30th, 21.
Sure. So on this one, I would just ask that we have an extension, or the administration had an extension of 30 days to file and for you to approve these minutes. In the, all that's going on, there was an oversight and a have-not-yet-been filed. So I would just ask that there be a motion to extend the timeline to file and approve 30 days, please.
So I will make a motion to extend the timeline for 30 days for finally an approval of the minutes of the meetings mentioned.
Second.
On favor? Any discussion? No?
Melissa, did you get everybody?
I believe everyone responded in the affirmative.
Thank you.
That moves us to discussion, asking on the FY '22 budget adoption. Oh, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal year '22 budget adoption updated.
I'll send you that.
So there is a couple of documents that are on the... I have my mic not on. I'll go over there then.
So we have a couple of documents that are up on Board Docs. Just to review, we have the PowerPoint presentation, a brief presentation we'll review tonight. We also have a narrative that goes along with the presentation plus updated financial documents that shows the original adopted budget plus revised changes. So you can see it's highlighted in blue. So just to recap where we have been throughout the process. And really, what we're going to talk about tonight, we reviewed throughout the meetings, but we're at finalizing the budget right now. The variances that we have with the adopted budget have to do with revenue. So our revenue variances were town appropriation for education was level funded, as well as a slight reduction in state aid for education. Not so much the funding formula, but reduction in categorical funds in the governor's budget. How we balance the budget, we explored reductions. So we looked first at other revenue sources that could shift budgeted expenditures from general funds into grants. We looked at any retirements that we knew after the adoption of the budget. What we did is if they were retiring at top step, we brought them in or budgeted them at a lower step in class. We have the final premium rates for health and dental, as well as what we'll talk about is a one-time appropriation from the trust to help us with OPEB. And we have savings in transportation, and finally, a reduction of staff. Go to the next slide. Looking at the revenue again, the categorical funding that was reduced in the governor's budget had to do with appropriations for group home and high-cost special education. When you're looking at town appropriation for education, by law, you have to meet maintenance of effort, which is level funding, which is what we have in the budget now. On the next slide. Now you're looking at it from a financial lens. If you're looking at the actual for 2021, the school committee's adopted budget and our revised budget that we have tonight, you'll see the variances. A little over $1 million for local appropriation for education, for town appropriation for education, as well as the two categories for categorically. You come with a budgeted variance of 1.1 million. Onto the next slide. Now you're looking at how we close the budget gap. So to review, and when you're looking at your financials, if you are looking at it on Board Docs, these categories add up to the categories that are highlighted in the financials so that you can see and trace the differences. The first is a reduction in salary and benefits totaling $131,000. That's moving positions from general fund to asset that we spoke about before. Those are two custodial positions and .4 of three positions that are teacher assistants. So there was a reduction in general fund and an increase with the application for ESAR. The next is looking at the retirements that happened after the adoption of the budget. And what we did is lower those to a lower-classed step. That saved us $113,000. The next is the elimination of 3.5 positions in the budget. That was our biggest savings. That is over $404,000. The next is something that was new to this year, and it hasn't been done for a while. It's a trust equity disbursement. And what that is, is there are municipalities and school districts that belong to the Rhode Island Interlocal Trust. And that is a health pool and a dental pool. They took a vote with their board to have an appropriation from equity of a little over $4.5 million to reduce the health and dental premiums. They also had a little, close to $5 million that they were able to give back to districts and municipalities. And you were able to take it in certain categories. You could either further reduce your premium or you could take it as we're doing to offset. You could either further reduce your premium or you could take it as we're doing to offset OPEB or other post-employment benefits. And as we talked about before, what we're going to do so that it's not just a one-year thing is work with the town and work with the actuaries to see if we can permanently reduce that OPEB payment. That got us a reduction to the budget of $159,000. When we talked about just a little while ago with the trust being able to reduce our premiums from what was budgeted to what was actual for the premium rates for health and dental, we were able to reduce that $252,000. The last is based on a pending waiver. It is the reduction in our budgeted transportation, allowing us to have local transportation instead of statewide for out-of-district cost. At this point, we still have not received the final rates from Rhode Island Department of Education. They're in negotiations with their statewide contractor, but based on preliminary conversations, we feel comfortable with a number of $45,000 to close the budget gap. So that gets us to 1.1 million and that is how we close the gap with a reduction to expenditures. Onto the next slide. Now you're looking at it at these higher level categories. So really the majority of the reductions came in employee compensation with salary and benefits with the smallest, with the contracted services for student transportation. So we can go to the next slide. And just to really recap where we are right now, again, we are working with the transportation contractor and statewide. When we finalize that, we'll bring it back to the school committee for approval to go to RIDE for the waiver. We are currently working on our SR2 application, which is due July 1. So the reduction in the positions in general fund that we spoke about will be part of our application to RIDE for approval. That's due July 1. We're also in the planning stages for SR3. What that looks like, we'll be able to come back to the school committee and do a presentation. We will constantly and continuously monitor staffing and the impact in the budget. We had spoke about about a month back to work with the budget subcommittee. I think that's a great idea to continue on that process to review our policies and procedures. We're in the process of looking at developing a pretty comprehensive procedure manual and looking for guidance from the budget subcommittee about continuation of improvement on our reporting, but also looking at target dates to bring back comprehensive reviews of line items on a quarterly basis. And at that point, I think we could really be able to do budget adjustments and continue with that process of improving transparency. So I don't know if anybody has questions.
You can always guarantee any question. So out of curiosity, with the ESAR funds combined with monitoring changes in staffing and the impact on budget, my understanding of a portion of the money that is coming from the feds to the state and ultimately to us is that there are pockets of money that can be used for various reasons revolving around COVID, one of them being social emotional learning. And I'm curious if, number one, do we know how much money, number one, that we're getting and number two, that's going to be, can be used for social emotional learning? And also what kind of, what kind of expenses does that include? Could it include funding a one-year position or, you know, arts, supplementing arts positions or things of that nature revolving around staffing? Or is that totally separate from what we're, would be allowed to use that those funds for?
So SR2 is 1.3 million. We are working, just a few hours ago, with Charity and Gina and Jody on what that looks like. The priority right now is summer learning and developing that. There's a lot of data that goes along with planning SR and reporting and guidance that's been given at the local level. How do I say this? There has been guidance from the federal level that says that the restrictions that Rhode Island put on may be too restrictive and there might be a little more opportunity. So looking at that, I know that the Rhode Island Association of Superintendents has released preliminary data. That being said, with that more broadened, you know, opportunities, yes, than that could deny.
So would you mind explaining the budget deduction due to elimination of positions? Is that the layoffs or is that new positions?
So those are, they're three positions at the high schools that are elimination positions. So those would be part of the layoffs. Now, I'm not necessarily sure if that resulted in somebody, you know, losing employment or if they were part of the job fair in a different position. The .5 is a reduction of a middle school reading teacher, but it is coming back under ESAR as a reading specialist.
None of those eliminations have been within elementary schools?
No, they're all at the high school.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have a question? Okay. Next for discussion. We're going to do a vocal room. Ms. Boyden?
Aye.
Ms. Bateman to you?
Aye.
Ms. Fitch?
Aye.
Ms. Kemenzke?
Aye.
Ms. Bruckford?
Aye.
Sally Michelle?
Aye.
That motion passes. Discussion and action on NEASK MOAs for curriculum rates and other pays.
I'll make a motion to approve NEASK MOA for curriculum rate and other pay.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. That motion passes. Next up is NEASK MOA for job share.
I'll make a motion to approve NEASK MOA for job share.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Favor?
Aye.
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 That motion passes. Next up is NEASK MOA for COVID extension part one.
I will make a motion to approve NEASK MOA for COVID extension part one.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes. So next up is the school lunch contract with Chartwells. Any, a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to approve the school lunch contract with Chartwells.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
I was going to say, do you have a question?
Hello. So just briefly, this is South Kingstown School signing on for statewide contract. Chartwells was the awarding vendor for statewide and this year we're signing on to statewide. It's a standard contract that all districts who go with Chartwells use through RIDE.
We just have a clarifying question when it comes to our school lunches. So we have this contract. How does it relate to what we've been receiving due to COVID as far as all students have been receiving free lunches? Like, is it related in any way, shape or form or is this a separate contract that we put into place and are those intertwined?
So the statewide, as Aubrey said, is the standard contract for all. The lunches are part of federal COVID funding. RIDE has released preliminary guidance and I, we're finalizing it now, but that will continue as soon as we get the final guidance from RIDE. It is continuing at the federal level. There's some discussion how Rhode Island is going to roll that out. We should know that in the next few weeks and we'll be able to bring it back at the next, absolutely at the next meeting.
Does, everyone in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion passes. We have a discussion in the first reading, child nutrition program procurement. Do I have a motion? To be the first reading.
Ms. Whitford, since this is just a first reading and this will come back to us again for a second meeting, I don't think we need a motion. I think we just need to see if anybody has any questions on the, on the document or concerns, Aubrey.
No, thank you, Ms. Brusso. It's just on for discussion.
Does anybody have any questions? Okay, we can move on to the school committee summary. So I'm just gonna take up the lead on that. So there was a so there's a couple of us that still having sent in their dates that they could attend. So that's still out there. I didn't have it somewhere with me about GNR and ordering to do this.
So Ms. Whitford?
Yes.
I'm the one, I'm one of the people that didn't respond. I couldn't get to the doodle pole from my hospital bed, to be perfectly honest with you. And since I came home, I forgot about responding to that doodle pole, but I will do that in the morning.
Okay.
The idea behind it, so that everyone knows, is that it will be a full day event from about eight to three. And Paula and I have talked about this and so what we talked about, when we talked about having our administrative staff join us, we talked about setting school committee goals for the '21-'22 school year. And, and I'm not sure, Ms. Whitford, if you thought of anything else that you and I talked about as foundations for our discussion that day. But I would certainly welcome any school committee member who has a thought on what they would like to see as part of our agenda of the day to forward that to either Ms. Whitford or myself or to Ms. Lepp. And we would incorporate it in depending on what transpires, you know, in the next month. We may have to have a small business agenda at the beginning of the day. But the majority of the day will be a work session. And Ms. Whitford, please, curriculum, have you left anything else?
You haven't left anything out, but we can talk more about this after. I just wanted to let you know that right now on the schedule, it is, and the poll that was done is when, Friday is being favored of July 23rd, just so you know.
That, that date is fine with me. So
Yes.
That date is fine with me and I will reach out to Ms. Lepp in the morning and I apologize to the rest of the school committee for my not doing that in a alternate fashion.
Okay. Melissa?
Thank you, Paula. Yes, thank you for the microphone. I appreciate that. I just wanted to add in addition, number one, I'm grateful for the opportunity, listening to everything that we heard tonight. There is a lot to talk about and those of us who are new to the role, I think this provides an opportunity to finally do that in community because we haven't really had that chance. So thank you. I know we've been talking about it in some of our meetings. Another thing I think that came up as an addition is our own review and efforts for evaluations. And I'm not sure since our leadership changes, if that's now falling under Ms. Brusso to tackle that end of it, but wanted to add that as well as an overview of our curriculum changes in the future because I know there's a lot happening as we heard from the teachers in the admin team today and would love to hear more about that over the summer. Thank you.
I don't have anything to say about the school committee summer retreat planning, but next on the agenda is adjournment. And before we move to adjournment, I did have a couple of things that I wanted to say. In 2017, as a master-prepared educator, a parent of four kids in district, and a frequent volunteer in every one of my kids' classes, in a district that I graduated from when it was in its heyday, I saw that we needed major change in South Kingstown schools. I decided to step up for an open seat on the school committee because I thought I could help bring the change that our that our students, our teachers, and our entire community so desperately needed. I was at that time unanimously appointed by the town council. In 2018, I ran for a seat, and I was elected. Since 2017, I have reached out to the people who I have seen as adversarial to try to find common ground. I've spent hours upon hours with people that I sought out and sat with as a liberal Democrat, the most conservative people that I could find, so that I could hear a different point of view. Because I didn't believe that whether you were a Democrat or a Republican, or who you voted for in a national presidential election, should really have any impact on our ability as community members in small South Kingstown to take care of 2,800 students. I thought that we could work together. I listened, and I believed that although we may not all politically align, that we could work together to find a way forward that was putting our students first. However, I made an assumption. I made an assumption that we all held similar ideals of doing what is best for our kids. I want to thank our teachers. I want to thank our staff. I want to thank our kids for working really, really hard. I want to thank my husband and my own kids and my family for understanding my desire to make South Kingstown schools a place for all students to succeed and believing in a vision, one that Linda Sabastano and I both share, to make decisions that put kids first. You only need two things for successful learning to take place. You need students, and you need teachers. Thank you to our teachers. Students, I believe to the depths of my soul that every single one of you have potential. Please be brave and continue to be creative and diligent. Sometimes being brave means knowing when it is time to move in a different direction. I am really sad that after being raised in this town and attending South Kingstown schools from stepping stone upstairs with Mrs. Haas to graduating from SKH AS in 1998, that it feels right when we're on the brink of real change. Change that would bring our district back to the top. Bullies, elitists, slander, lies, trial by social media, they're all prevailing. Tonight, I am officially resigning from the school committee. Thank you to those of you in this town, a town that I truly love, for those of you that have been beyond supportive. I truly hope that Democrats, Republicans, people that are unaffiliated, parents, kids, grandparents, can realize the damage that's being done every single day, that you all choose not to try to come together. We are in a dangerous place for a little microcosm of what has happened on a national level. This is not South Kingstown. And if everybody doesn't take a deep frigging breath, we're going to be in real trouble. I implore everyone to take a step back and try to come together. Do it for our kids.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Thank you, Emily.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. Favor?
Aye.
Aye.